McDoel, Auditor's Office, Election Help Effective eight eleven two thousand twenty. D, approved temporary hire Cindy Henry, Auditor's Office, Election Help Effective eight eleven two thousand twenty. E, approved step increase Toby Hill, MG two Secondary Roads, Effective August twenty six two thousand twenty. F, approved five day Class C liquor license application for your private bartender LLC. G, set public hearing date for September first two thousand twenty at nine forty AM for rezoning application submitted by Land Concepts LLC. One two one one nine Stratford Drive, Clive Iowa five oh three two five for certain lands within Warren County from A one Agricultural District District and FCP Flood Plan Conservation District to RR one Rural Residential District. And H, set public hearing date for September one two thousand twenty at nine forty five AM for rezoning application submitted by Lance and Valerie Short. For certain lands within Warren County from A one Agricultural District to M one Light Industrial District located at six oh four nine R fifty seven Highway Indianola Iowa five oh one two five.
I would move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion Tracy?
McIntyre.
Aye.
Shoal?
Aye.
DuKook?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number two, consider change order with De Vries Electric Inc. on Justice Center project with possible action.
Um, this is a change order with De Vries Electric in the amount of two thousand three hundred fifty four dollars and eighty six cents. Um, this was in regards in accordance with the initial plan review from the Iowa State Fire Marshal. Um, this was a change to the lighting within that elevator. Um, Mike Lewis is on the phone with us as well. I don't, it's just a change to that lighting fixture, I believe, Mike. The way that it's, the Fire Marshal recommended a difference to that lighting.
Yeah, the State Fire Marshal required a, a change in light fixture design in the elevator shaft. Uh, this was a change in the code and so, uh, uh, De Vries is now reflecting that change as a result of Fire Marshal's request.
I would move the change order.
And?
Twenty three fifty four eighty six.
Second. Any discussion? Tracy?
Shoal?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
DuKook?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number three, consider building envelope commissioning services with Shy Pattery Inc. on Justice Center project with possible action. This one's Mike.
Good evening everybody. When, uh, the project bid, uh, originally there were mechanical electrical commissioning services that were, uh, a part of the DCI's solicitation. They went out and, uh, solicited for that service. In conversations after the bid, uh, we felt that it was important to put before the board, uh, an opportunity to look at a separate set of commissioning requirements, uh, which is called Building Envelope Commissioning Services. The Building Envelope Commissioning Services is to specifically look at the wall cladding, exterior window systems, and, uh, what's called a vapor and moisture barrier on the building. Uh, and basically it's all the elements that will address watertightness of the building, including the roofing system. And so, this is a specific service by, um, Stephen Thomas, the Shy Pattery, an employee of Shy Pattery, to go beyond the original contracted service, uh, for the envelope commissioning. It is dedicated to, um, looking at the watertightness issues on the building where Stephen would be there twenty-four times during a four month period. When those activities are going on, uh, that's the schedule that Nick is outlining for us if it takes six months. Uh, it, whatever that may be, we anticipate it's twenty-four trips. Uh, and, uh, to, to address that, uh, this is again specific to that where I and the other architects on the project are looking at the balance of the building and we're there every couple of weeks. This is going to be there at the, uh, regular time and activities for this specific envelope construction. Uh, and so for that value added service, uh, Stephen is outlining the lump sum fee of sixty thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars. Uh, there are reimbursable expenses in there. There is a, a specific lift rental, uh, that we have to do in order to perform, perform watertightness tests in sections of the building, uh, and then as well as his travel, which is separate from the other travel. Uh, so the total cost of the service, uh, including the expenses and the lift rental is sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, Nick has, uh, Nick Brook with DCI has advocated that he thinks this is a, a valuable part of the project to look at the watertightness where somebody will be on site more frequently, uh, feeling that the activities will warrant that. Uh, and so I guess that's my general overview of what this is about. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mike, this is Crystal. Isn't this, um, I mean, aren't the architects gonna be responsible for this either way?
Well, commissioning services, Crystal, by the design agreement is an additional service. And so what we are there to do is we will look at the roof and the envelope and the windows. You are correct, we will look at that, but we will only be infrequently looking at it, uh, while we're looking at the other aspects of the building. And so, uh, this service is a supplement or enhancement to the, to the basic services.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, I have a question too. Is this, is this a code requirement or is this not a code requirement? I understand that it's a value added service, but I'm, I'm curious as to know, and I don't, I think I know the answer, but I, I wanna hear it. Um, is it a code requirement?
Uh, is it a code requirement? No, it is not, Aaron. The code requirement was the mechanical, uh, electrical commissioning services that were contracted, uh, through DCI Group and, and a subcontractor. So this is not a code required service. This is, uh, simply an, an enhancement if you wish to.
I, and I just, I just had it in my mind that there was something, and I think it was HVAC or mechanical that there was a, a code requirement on. Um, okay.
Yep, yes, you're correct. That is a requirement and that has been contracted and is separate from this.
Mike, Doug Shoal, does, uh, does Steve work for your firm?
Uh, Stephen Thomas does work for Shy Pattery. He's an employee of Shy Pattery and his, uh, focus here is envelope commissioning. He, uh, not only provides his service for Shy Pattery, he also works for other owners with other architects. It's, uh, this is his specialty.
So i- i- is he an employee of Shy?
Yes, he is, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Lewis while we have him? Okay, seeing none. Um, I will say this, I, I wanna give it a little more thought. I know that there's some time sensitivity to it. Um, but I'm just not comfortable at tonight's meeting to move forward with it without, um, thinking on it some more and, and making sure we explore all options there. Um, it's not an insignificant amount of money. It's sixty-six thousand dollars. Um, I, I hear your point earlier too, Crystal, on, um, s- you know, while I understand that this is an additional service, I, I also understand that, um, I sort of expect a watertight building in either scenario. And so, um, for this, at this moment in time, I'm, I'm pretty okay, um, bringing this back up at a, at a later date and maybe not too late, but a week or two out from now or at our next meeting. I, I, I just want two more weeks on it. Crystal and Doug, are you?
I, I agree with that.
I do too. Thank you.
Alright, so we will, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I appreciate your time.
That's fine, Aaron. I just wanted to, uh, get it in front of you in first chance and just let me know when you're ready to talk about it again. Thank you.
Yep. Sounds good. Thank you. Yep. Okay, um, so we'll take no action on number three, which will move us to number four. Discussion of county building reopening plan with possible action. And for this, I know that we have, uh, a member from the community who'd like to speak. I see that our health director's here, our treasurer's here, and, and honestly, I just think that it's probably appropriate that we don't lose sight of, um, changing numbers and changing times. And so, you know, I, I will be very upfront with everyone. Um, I don't know how my colleagues' inbox is looking, but I'm certainly getting, um, phone calls and emails about when, uh, when the building might reopen. And I, I just feel uncomfortable leaving, uh, a date that's out into December without bringing this back, um, on a regular basis so that we're doing right by everyone. I'm happy to hear everyone's point of view and try to make an appropriate decision here. Um, but I, I do think that just conceptually, I will say that, um, I do struggle with, with some aspect of keeping our building, um, locked. I understand that our employees are working. I understand that our employers, our employees are working hard and that they are by appointment only. I also understand that, um, if someone just called my law firm and, um, didn't call my law firm and just popped in, that, uh, the chances of them, of them getting an appointment or, or getting some time is gonna be pretty hit, hit or miss and, and, um, you know, you'd make an appointment for that or you'd make an appointment with the doctor. And so I, I, I get both sides. Um, with that said, uh, I think everyone's well aware that the schools are, are reopening. I can't promise how successful that will go or won't go, but I think that there are some similarities, not an exact similarity because, um, and they're, they're just different. But I, I think the optics of having our public schools reopen, uh, a public building that is funded by taxpayers and bringing, uh, children back to those schools while our, while, while our administration building is closed, um, there's something about that that I'm uneasy about. And so I wanna hear from, from everyone and, and, uh, those are my general thoughts. So I don't know who would like to start, um, and we're gonna give all the due diligence out there. I just wanted to make people aware that I'm, I'm listening through, um, I'm hearing those concerns. And, uh, I suspect my colleagues are, are getting some of the same questions or, or concerns, um, as well, but I don't know that. So with that, who would like to begin? Mary Lee, that would be wonderful. If you'd state your name and your address, please.
Okay. Um, Mary Lee Benetrol, one zero two zero five Highway ninety-two in Indianola. Um, I come as a peacemaker, but I would like to ask you to reconsider your decision to close the administration building until next year. Um, people have come back to work. Most grocery stores, gas stations and Walmart never closed. Schools and libraries are opening. Churches and bars are opening. Resorts are opening. Car dealerships are open and selling vehicles. Licensing headaches for Warren County citizens comes from that. Um, I'm hearing a lot of that. Uh, two offices in particular are concerning to many Warren County people. The Treasurer's Office, there's frustrations from overly long appointment delays for conducting the business of vehicle tax and licensing. Many working people do not have luxury of making an appointment. They leave work to have to leave work in the middle of the day. How much time does it normally take to do something like that? I've been told appointments are being fifteen to thirty minutes apart. Does it really take that long? And we are in the Auditor's Office. We have elections coming up soon and, um, I, um, several others, I am aware of, have a great concern about the voting process this year. It is unclear most of us how our elections are going to take place. Um, I've heard there may be drop boxes for absentee ballots. Is that true? Some sort of public notice from the Auditor's could be a good thing. Can we just conduct a regular election with open polling places? Absentee ballots for those overwhelmed with COVID concerns can still function like it always has. I'm concerned the Auditor's Office may be overloaded with absentee ballot counting. Regular voting procedures at all regular voting, polling places should be in place, perhaps with protocols for each area. Do we need transparency for training for elections, if that's even going on? Uh, which polling places have been reserved and are expected to be open? And who will have access on election day if the building is closed? I personally believe, I think vacation needs to be over, uh, from being opened up. I know you guys have all been working and it's obvious that, but we aren't being able, we aren't able as citizens to conduct our business in an expedient way either. Uh, we shouldn't need to make an appointment to do county business, uh, when most everything but county government is back to work. Our taxes pay your wages. Figure out what Warren County needs to do to be open and put some protocols in place. It's a simple idea. Walmart, grocery stores and all kinds of retail outlets have figured it out, such as one door entry, first come, first served, fight discouraged, some of that out, out of county licensing in the Treasurer's Office. Let a number of visitors authorized inside the building at one time. Take a number like Baskin Robbins for business with Treasurer's Office or other heavily used office. Um, building closed from admittance of visitors one hour ahead of actual closing, uh, to accommodate all those who've actually been admitted inside to conduct their business might be another option. Please consider it being fair to all Warren County citizens. I believe our liberties are threatened by an extended closure of a public facility. Put some precautions in place for those that are concerned. Open backup for the rest of us. Please consider a reversal of the Declaration Resolution and other actions that closed the people's administration buildings until after the first of the year. Do it as quickly as you declared the original. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, since we have our auditor here, would you like to, to give an update on the, on the election? Because I, I, it is a concern and I know people are, um, genuinely concerned about polling locations. And can you sort of give a plan, at least what you have as of today? And I get that there might be some fluidity to that, but as it stands, now what are you planning for election? We'll, we'll try to, I'll try to piecemeal some of, of the concerns with what we have here today. And then we'll, we'll, we'll talk to some people and we'll discuss it as a board and we'll, we'll go from there. But I, but I am curious as to the response to the auditor's question, the elections question. Cause I think that November, what was it, four?
Third.
Third? It's coming up quickly. It's coming up quickly. So we're, we're about, what, ninety days out, something like that? So I'd love to hear where, where you're at with today's plans for it and, and go from there.
At this point, all polling places planned to be open, except maybe a couple out in the county. I may have to combine. Um, I'm getting letters ready to go out for my workers, so it kinda depends on if I have people to staff my polling places or not, which I think Norwalk, which is pushing really good for election workers, so, uh, I don't think I'll have any problems over there. Um, we are getting, both parties are sending out requests for absentee, so we are getting a lot of requests turned in. Um, if people wanna drop them off, you know, they can call us when they get here. We meet them at the door. We pick up their request. Um, same with, um, we mail the request out to them. A lot of people aren't comfortable with the requests that are coming from the parties, so they're calling us to have us send them one. But we're here for them to, um, to get their request form, so we can get their ballots out when October rolls around. I, like you, feel bad about the building being open because it is a public or being closed, um, because it is for the public. But, uh, I also can't afford my employees to get sick before this election because it is a heavy, gonna be a big one. And I need everybody I can get to work the absentee, just to get the mailings done. Um, and I had, I sent the supervisors, um, email regarding a drop box, which I think not just for elections, but I think the whole building needs a, a box to where people can drop their request or their ballot or whatever, election day. But at this point, I do plan to have everything open. I don't plan to do absentee voting in my office because there's no room. There's gonna be a ton of people, like the Treasurer's Office, she's gonna be bombarded with people. Um, I still plan to do curbside voting, um, so when they, we'll have maybe four spots blocked off out here on the south end where they pull up, like we did at the primaries, and, uh, vote from their vehicle. That worked out very well if they don't wanna do absentee by, by mail. So at this point, that's kinda what I'm looking at.
How many polling places do you normally run?
Thirty-one.
And you're thinking twenty-eight or twenty-nine, something like that?
If I get thirty-one, I will, but I, I know, I think there's one or two on the east side of the county that I am gonna have trouble with, so I may have to combine.
Sure.
So, but the majority, yes, I do plan to have open.
I was thinking, uh, I, I, I know when we talked about all this, we did talk about the building, that, what do I call it, the gymnasium or whatever was gonna be open and, and we're talking about a drop box, which sounds... But I think what, when we decided on December thirty-first, it was because if we opened and then the governor came out with another demand, we, we just, I think, at least that's what I thought. The reason we went to December thirty-first was we just didn't wanna open, close, open, close, open, close. Now that's, I don't, that's what I recall.
Yeah, my, my other take, and I'll, I'll be very upfront with everyone. Between March and now, I think, I, I think a lot of things have changed. Um, you know, in, in March, um, everyone who watched the news a little bit saw, you know, on the high end, maybe two million Americans might, might pass from this. There, there was just so much uncertainty and questions about it. I'm not saying that it's minor. It's not. It's very serious, especially for some people that, um, typically are older or have some, some additional health issues or comorbidities. It, it, it's very serious. Um, but on the other hand, I think that some of those numbers have changed a little bit. Some of the flatten the curve, um, goals, um, you know, was, was done at a great cost. I mean, not just the cost for our county, but a, a great cost for the, the Treasury of the US. I mean, I think we're probably at four or five trillion dollars and more to go, so it's not like it's, um, inexpensive. But I think part of that was done, or the original closure of what I consider the economy or much of the economy, with the exception of what you mentioned, grocery stores and gas stations. And it, it did seem like there was some hit or miss on what, what actually was closed and, and, and I hate that there probably is some politics involved in all of it as well. But, um, at that time, from my perspective, it was, the main concern was to make sure that our hospitals weren't overrun, uh, to make sure that, um, people that, that would get the virus, um, would have a place for treatment. And I'm not minimizing the hundred and sixty-one thousand Americans who've passed from it because I think that's tragic. But, um, you know, I, I think you also, if you're being objective, you have to look at the hospitalization rate and who's, who's treating and do we have blood capacity and, and, um, what is the plan alternatively? Because if the plan alternatively is just until there's no new COVID cases at all, or until there's no new viruses at all, I don't think that that's probably feasible. And so I fall somewhere in between those, but I do think my, my, um, perception has changed some, um, probably a fair amount since March. And so to that end, I, I have to be cognizant of, um, who's paying the bills here. And it is the taxpayers and, and it is, it is a public building. And so, uh, when I said, uh, it doesn't sit right with me to have our public schools open, um, and while I concede that I can't just walk into any public school I want, because there are publics. My, my middle ground approach to something like this, which will still probably make some people very, very upset, might be to, to, to really consider a reopening with some pretty strict protocols to start. Maybe it's if you're in the building, you're wearing a mask. And I know that that won't sit well with some people. I get that. But on the other hand, we also have employees here that I care deeply about, and, and Tracy makes a great point, or Hunter makes a great point. If half of our staff has COVID and is out for two weeks at election time, we're gonna have a real problem. And so I get that too. So I don't, I don't know where, where we sit, but, but I, I've heard from enough people and I, I've given it some thought that I'm, I'm not comfortable with just leaving a, a date of December. I, I'm also not comfortable saying, hey, uh, open it all up and get back to business and no precautions because I think that there's some ISAC guidance that's been passed out that Megan can address and Jodeen can address. Um, but it would be my preference, it's just one of three, to, to have some middle ground there that, that, um, looks at what we're doing now. Because I, I, I just have some issues with it.
And we have, um, ISAC did, uh, release some guidelines for reopening, um, specifically in regards to the courts, but we've done for all of our buildings. Um, and for the most part, we have, um, come in line with all of those. There's a, the few of the items that we haven't approached simply because we were going to be closed until the end of December. Um, as in, it, what type of protocol the board wants in place as far as the PPE, whether you're gonna require employees and everybody entering to wear a mask, those types of things. Um, is there an adequate supply of PPE if you do require those? Um, Jodeen, our, our public health director, she does have white cloth masks available, um, like up to a thousand of them or more um, for employees and for those entering. A protocol in place for frequent cleaning of public restrooms. Um, Kirk has brought, um, our maintenance, we have purchased, um, these sprayers that, uh, do a find and miss disinfectant that sit, have to sit for five minutes to fully disinfect. Um, so those can be sprayed down periodically throughout the day within the restrooms, um, to disinfect throughout the day. Um, as far as our regular cleaning service, we have that every work night, um, five nights a week, I should say. Um, common area of social distancing. Um, social distancing is where it gets a little, um, trickier for us because of our setup. Um, we do not currently have social distancing markers, but we could certainly mark the floors for six feet spacing. Um, Kirk, uh, and I, we measured the downstairs because certainly it's gonna be in front of the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office. Um, we measured out six feet spacing. You can fit twelve people, um, in the Auditor's space or in the, the Treasurer's space, um, between the hallway between the Treasurer's and the Auditor. And then on the driver's license, you can fit six. You could fit another twelve down this hallway if you wanted to line them up. Um, are you going to have one-way walkways? Those are the types of nuts and bolts of if you reopen the building, that the board is gonna have to decide what that looks like as far as how they want that. Um, we can, um, we cannot close fire doors, so you can't, um, funnel everyone through one entrance. Um, so you could have one door open where you're checking to make sure you have a certain capacity, but we don't know where they exit out of because we can't lock the fire doors. Um, so there's a little bit of logistics to it that's complicated with that, um, but not unobtainable, depending on what the board would like to do. Um, we have not reduced the, the capacity. I believe the fifty percent capacity was lifted on June tenth by the governor. Um, so those are kind of the, um, and then it, do you want a mandatory health screening as far as are we gonna position someone at the doors to do a health screening? Um, right now we have the signs posted that you don't come in if you've been, you know, um, ill. Um, if you have recently been in close contact, if you have tested positive, we all have all of that posted on the door. But do we wanna have somebody positioned there to take temperatures and/or to ask the questions? So those are just kind of the logistics of it, um, as far as if the board would like to reopen. I think we're gonna need some guidance from the board on what that looks like for you.
Another thought is the cost. Uh, this will be additional cost. And one of the issues, and I haven't really thought through this, but I'm concerned about property tax collections, which would be through the end of September or whatever.
I know when I was in the Treasurer's Office, online tax payments, we were in the top ten for the state on, online.
But I'm just talking about people being able to pay the taxes. Unemployment, I, I don't sit around and I have no idea. I don't know, are we gonna have another P, PDP?
Those are decisions I don't make. Yeah, I don't know. Um, I would welcome our health director's thoughts and then our treasurer and then anyone else who would like, um, to speak on behalf of this. And then I'd like to hear from Supervisor McIntyre and her thoughts and, um, maybe we can build some sort of a consensus. I don't know.
Um, from the Health Department, public health point of view, um, I think it's doable that you could open the building. I think that there's something you need... I think that there's things you need to do yet, like I, I just, if you think, like you mentioned, stores that have the six-foot markings, that I think you have to be responsible, if you're gonna open the doors, you have to be responsible enough to remind people what they're supposed to do when they're in here, to keep us safe and to keep each other safe. That's, you know, hand sanitizer station, maybe when you come in, then you stand in line. Um, I, I personally have great respect for those retail outlets who are requiring masks. I don't know that you can or can't do that, um, there's masks available. I think we personally, we will not serve anyone who does not wear masks unless they are medically incapacitated to wear, and that's somebody with severe breathing issues. Um, we provide them if they don't come with one, but again, we are close. We are this close for twenty minutes clipping toenails or, so my staff is 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 at risk. So, and and we have not had one single person that we're serving who did not agree, yes, I should wear a mask and so should you. I mean, they don't wanna bring anything to us. So I I would hope that would be the general consensus of the citizens in, to to get a service from any of us. Um, so I think it 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 is doable. I don't know about, um, you know, what if you have over twelve people in the hall, then what? And and I don't know that we have anyone who can stand at a door and count and police and that's one of the things. Anything you say we require this, you gotta have a plan to police that and some kind of action if it doesn't happen the way you set it up. So that's, uh, our, uh, very strong recommendation is sometimes better than a requirement, but again, we put a requirement on our service. Um, I don't know, I, that that's what I think, I think it's doable, I just think we have to have a plan and we have to be responsible to protect the citizens who will be in here and the staff who are serving.
Thank you very much for your insight. Julie, Julie, speaking, speak on it.
I was totally unprepared for this, you obviously got this. Um, you know, I think in the beginning, a couple of the things, just as a reminder, was we were worried about a respite. We haven't seen that yet, but the kids aren't gonna have to school yet either. We were worried about not having vaccine, I haven't seen anything like that. Um, so that those played, uh, played into the decision to just wait the rest of the year out. Um, my decision is separate from the boards. The board is in charge of the building, the board is in charge of the doors. I already made the decision that the treasurer's office is going to be by appointment only forever. I made that clear several months ago, so your heat is probably home with me, because people can't get in. Um, we did start with our appointments half hour, they quickly became fifteen minutes, because we know you don't need a half hour. And we're trying to get everybody in, all the little things, people that come to the door without an appointment, we're doing our best to get them in. Um, we are hooked up to September twenty-fifth, we're just title transfers, trying to catch up from COVID. People couldn't do anything for months, the walls stopped. It's gonna take a while to get those things back after order, if they ever are, I don't know. In between any appointments that may not show up, we have two weeks of mail that we're trying to catch up on. People mail stuff in because they can't come in, so we have a lot more mail, we have a lot more phone calls. They ring from seven-thirty to four-thirty every day, non-stop, trying to make appointments or trying to find help. So I do take exception to the word vacation, because it's been anything but that for my office. If anybody in my office got COVID, that would be awful, and it would be awful for anybody. But, um, property taxes, we collected in March without a single person in the building, so that's not a, not an issue. We've, we've put a lot of things in place. You have to make an appointment pretty much anywhere you go. Do you pay my salary? I don't know, do you love paying your taxes? I mean, you know, that's, it's, you know, it's, it's a hard place for all of us to be in. But I feel like if you're getting complaints and you open the doors, the only thing that's gonna change is that they will now be mad inside the building instead of outside. Because I'm going to remain by appointment only, that's the only way we can function. With the driver's license that we offer and now DOT has closed, they're closed, they are only appointment only, that's all they're ever gonna do from now on. So those people come to Mindy Nola, Hope County has a way or higher, um, you know, number of cases. All those people will be here, um, I can't not help them, if the doors are open, I have, you know. So the only way I can control my office is by appointment only. And, you know, like it's been said many times, you make appointments everywhere you go, it isn't that big a deal. You might hear the ones that write about it, but you don't hear the hundreds that say, this is so much better than taking a day off and standing in line to DMV for something I could have done in fifteen minutes. Most people love it, there's always gonna be the people that want what they want now, right now, if I wanna be able to do this the way I wanna do it. But, you know, the world has changed, huge, huge change. So, and I'm not sure, open opening the doors, that's, that's your deal, that's the building, you know, not gonna change, appointments over in the treasurer's office, that's how we, that's the only way we can handle it. I think it's too long, has too big, too much of a threat. So, you know, we're doing the best we can to get as much done as we can, but we ain't gonna make your company happy. Absolutely, we go, whatever, never, yeah.
I, I would, if it's okay.
Sure.
Uh, one of the things I, uh, is.
I know what you're, I understand what you're going through, and why this is this way.
And I understand that there's a huge influx from other counties and so forth. Um, but if there is, uh, you can somehow orchestrate limiting so many in the building at a time, and if it's first come, first served basis, that should serve the locals first if they desire to, uh, conduct business in Warren County. Um, if they show up and get their baskets and humpens members, so to speak, uh, and get in line and then you only let so many in, there, it could be figured out with color coding on the numbers or something that says this person's going to treasurer's office and this yellow one's going to the auditor's office, something like that. And then let so many in at a time inside the treasurer's office and everybody else has to wait outside. I mean, I would think that would be a given, and and the ones that are not in this area are going to give up standing outside, uh, unless they wanna come down early and get in line with everyone else. I just thought that might be another workable option, it sounds like people already made up their mind about appointments.
Well, because I've already looked at that, I mean, ten thousand dollars to my systems like that. You know, however much it costs for an employee to police the hallways, I mean, it's so expensive to, you know, I looked at having a system, I'd take, take, take a number, go sit in the auditorium, I looked at all that stuff. You know, it's, it's, it's so expensive, you still have to have somebody to maintain it, you know, it's, it wasn't doable. It doesn't make sense to me for everybody to come and stand in line outside the building. Why would you do that when you could make an appointment?
Uh, because not everyone, uh, like I mentioned that, people that aren't gainfully employed somewhere else, there's, there are people that they have to work, they don't have a day off, you know.
But they make appointments at other places and they have to go.
If they're sick, but if they've just got to re-license their vehicle, they can't really justify, that's all. I just, I know of a couple, uh, situations like that, that I had specifically mentioned, man, that, well, that's true, you know.
And we do try, I mean, if if we know there's some circumstance, but today it's raining, the farmers can't farm, they're all gonna want in. We do, you know, we try to get as many in as we can, I mean, there's gonna be exceptions. Um, and so much, I mean, getting your stickers, mailing in, doing online with, you know, there's so much you can do without coming in. Title transfers, that's what you can't do. So, you know, and there's, there's a class, plenty, plenty.
I I will say this, I think most, most of the, I hate to say complaints, most of the people who have expressed a concern, it is about, it is about yours. But what I, what I don't think that the public really grasps is, well, we as a board control the envelope of the building and ensure that we have some budgetary responsibilities. Our treasurer's an elected official and and I, I don't get to dictate to our treasurer that your o- office hours are this and they're gonna do this. I mean, I don't know what that looks like, but I'm, I'm just telling people, that's not, that's not in my wheelhouse where I can tell them, Julie, this is what you're gonna do, we're gonna open the building and you're gonna serve everyone first come. Actually, I can do it. Um, so I, I don't know if no matter what we do, we're gonna remedy those people expressing those concerns. But, but I still have a responsibility to try to do right by the public, um, with respect to what I can control, which is still the building. So I, I don't know, we're in a interesting position. Uh, Supervisor McIntyre, I'd, I'd, I'd really welcome your thoughts on this, if you have some thoughts or ideas or where, where are you at on this?
All right, um, thank you very much, uh. Uh, I think Julie already touched on the subject, that the numbering system, um, because of the space constraints in the admin building, which were addressed, uh, for many years, but specifically last year, uh, I remember the board was addressed about the space constraints for, um, treasurer. The number system will not work because of those space constraints and we do not have an area that would work for a waiting room that is close to our treasurer's office. Having someone man the door or watch, uh, who, uh, the sheriff's office, take someone off the roads? Uh, do we hire a person to do this? These are budgetary things that we definitely would have to look at. Um, and what kind of qualifications does this type of person have to have? Um, private businesses, uh, I think Jodeen touched on this, our health, um, director, public health director. Private businesses can wear masks if they want, um, and the public can choose to go there or not. However, folks can't go anywhere else, so each department can choose to have, uh, the public wear a mask or not. Um, and that is up to that department head. As far as the Dropbox, um, I spoke to a Madison County supervisor about this, um, and it wouldn't just be for the auditor, um, the Madison County supervisor said that their Dropbox was an old, uh, mailbox and they started, um, with that and then they have since upgraded to a much larger Dropbox. It's been received by the public very well. Um, I, I don't know if it, I didn't go into detail with her, but, um, I don't know if we'd have to give receipt back that we received it or if the certain department received it. Um, there's just a, a lot of things that we're gonna need to consider and how much more time is this, you know, and and we wanna make this accessible to the public as as possible. Um, again, opening the building, you're putting more people at risk. Uh, and I don't think it's just COVID, I think there's all kinds of other things. Um, I know that since I've been here, I've been to two trainings on, um, people coming in the building, um, I forget the name of it, but it's the active shooter. Um, it's, it's been nice coming in the building and knowing that it's secure, but that's just my personal opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. And Supervisor Shoal, what, uh, where are you at on it?
I think that, yes, I haven't heard anything this evening that, that I wanna change my mind on December thirty-first. That doesn't mean between now and then, things will might change, but I, I just think there's too many things to be worked out that we do not, I'm not sure we can work them out. I don't, I, yeah, you know, the, if we're gonna have them outside, you gotta weather. And we know that some days it rains and some days it doesn't, and it doesn't rain enough. But when winter comes, it's cold every day and those people cannot be outside. I, I just don't see how that, how that would work at all. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of making a change at, at this point, from what I've heard. Really no different than when we made the decision, I don't know, two months ago.
And and Supervisor McIntyre, is that where you're at on this as well?
Well, I, I didn't say that I wasn't ready to make a change, um, it's just, there's a lot of considerations that I like to find out, you know, are there guidelines on having someone at the door? You know, because of COVID, do we have to have mandatory testing? I mean, do we, do they have to, you know, wear a mask? What, what are those guidelines? I know that ISAT came out with something, um, but, um, I didn't review anything for opening up the building because frankly, we weren't at that point. So, and how much is that gonna cost us to hire someone, man the door? Um, and the spacing is really my biggest concern, is having people in the hallway. I don't ever remember a time before COVID had, when we did not have a huge line at the driver's license office and at the treasurer's, um, windows. I just do not remember. And so, how's that gonna look for those, you know, like Doug said, standing outside? I, I just can't imagine turning people away or, and that just doesn't appeal to me. And so making appointments is wonderful and those who walk in off the street and then we have to tell them, well, you need to make an appointment. I, I think that's a, that's a very fair thing, but I, I think Julie is right. They, they're either gonna be mad at home or they're gonna be mad here in front of us, which I've been getting those calls too, so. Either way, I'm still gonna hear about it, but it, it'll be there in person or over email or over phone calls, so.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on it?
One other thing I wanted to say with the driver's license, with the twenty-eight year agreement that we have with the DOT, we, we can't just serve our county constituents, because I have to serve everyone in the state, so I can't control that very good. At least the motor vehicle, it's our people.
We've looked at that one.
Yeah.
It'd have been my preference to put a surtax on non-residents of our county.
Well, that was in the legislature before it died this year, we.
Apparently it didn't, it didn't happen.
Yeah, well, it's still gonna happen. And I just personally, I would, I would, I would not want to require people to wear masks. I am the person that thinks that's taking away your freedom. I think, I think you have the freedom to wear one or not, that's my freedom too, so I would not be happy with that, not at all.
Kirk, do you have something to add?
Uh, I'd like to just add that we need to keep in mind in the near future that the auditorium now will be being used possibly for jury trials. So when we do look at maybe reopening the building, when we start looking at capacities or spacing, however that gets looked at, we may have to actually take that into consideration. We're gonna, I know the Raymount plan is to try to keep them into the auditorium area, have them use the restrooms over by the kitchen area. But I don't know what that will entail once all that happens, because they're gonna have like jury selection and trials and. So if you start looking at that, let your hallways, I just want people to be aware that that is gonna start happening at some point. If we, they don't have enough, they can't get the six-foot distance to have enough jurors in the, the big court rooms along with everybody else. That's the reason they moved over here. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that and, and, um, you know, my, my concern too is, we could shut it down to one floor, we could, but then we have to police it. Uh, the other thing is, I'd like to talk a little bit about the spraying, you know, from, from basically this point forward, I gotta get what, what Miss Young's opinion through on these. This is not the one we will be, we'll be using this one until we receive our evidence. Um, but, so from a sanitation or disinfection side of things, I think we can handle that all right. It's more of the overall space that people will have and then how do we handle that. And I do know that like during, during voting, they won't have, they won't have trials or anything cleared out, so then that can be nothing from voting area, however that's gonna look, so.
Well, it does not appear as though we have a consensus. I I will state on the record that I I am supportive of getting the building opened um sooner rather than later. I understand that that's gonna entail a great deal of of additional issues and a plan that has to work. Um, but, but I'm also a realist in that if the building's open, but the treasurer's office is still gonna be by appointment only. I don't know as though we're solving any anything. I mean, I I don't, I I don't hear a lot of people saying, I just need to get my deer tag, which you can technically do on the Iowa DNR's website, it's really slick. Um, at the, at, you know, at the other office, I mean, I I just don't hear that there's some mask line there. I mean, really, the linchpin of the issue is that people are frustrated because it's, they're thirty days out and and I hate it, that's not your, that's not your fault. It's just, it is, it's sort of the hand that we are dealt at this point. But my point is, I'm not positive, I think Supervisor McIntyre alluded to this. Um, I'm not positive that we're really moving the needle forward much by going through those things. And I, and and while I I agree with you that I um, I think the mask is an is a sensitive issue. Um, and while I probably would have no issue with some pretty strict requirements to open the building, I'm sure that that will have some backlash too. But ultimately, if if it's not, if it's not changing the appointment-only policy of the treasurer's office, I I think we're really probably incurring a fair amount of costs. And logistical issues of which I'm willing to explore, um, but I don't know as though that's gonna solve anything. I mean, I just, un- unless that changes in the treasurer's office, I I don't think that those those concerns are gonna be fixed if the building's open. Although, I am supportive of opening the building and I'm willing to do it, so. That's kinda where I'm at. I I heard from Supervisor Shoal regarding, you know, the December date and I get where he's at. And and Crystal, are you somewhere in between there or leaning one way or the other? I just don't, I didn't quite follow it.
I I don't mind opening the building back up, um, it's just the public has to understand that um it's up to the department heads and how they handle their business. And the majority of the complaints that I've received is because of um not being able to register their cars, you know, thirty days out, you know, they don't wanna wait. Um, I'm sorry, that's still gonna be an issue, um, you're you're not gonna incur any fees or fines, is that correct, Julie?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and and so I think all accommodations are being made, um, but they have to understand that even before this happened, we still had space constraints. And now it's even more concerning, because if you get someone in here who, you you know, wants that social distancing and they're standing in line and people aren't respecting that. We're gonna have bigger issues and, you know, I I I don't know, you know, I I don't mind opening the building, but I I still say that. It's not gonna solve the issues that I think the public thinks that they're going to solve by the building being opened.
I tend to agree. Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion if anyone has one. And if not, then it'll die for a lack of emotion.
Well, I'll make the motion that we um unlock the doors. And the department heads certainly have um their um responsibility to outline how we're going to serve the public.
And is there a timeframe that you're you have in mind for that? I I just think that this is maybe being dropped, dropped a little bit on some of the department heads that that maybe aren't um aware. And so I'd like to at least give them a little bit of time with that.
Okay, okay, I I see what you're saying. Um, and I, I still need to research, you know, what ISAC had sent out and what, you know, I know that. They have a new COVID federal director on that task force, so. And he doesn't seem to be, I think it's Scott Atlas, he doesn't seem to be focused on shutting the country down again. Um, so, it's gonna be interesting in the next couple of weeks about what may or may happen, so. Um, I wouldn't mind setting this for September first to unlock the doors.
Okay. Okay, this is the eighteenth, um, okay. Um, I'm I'm gonna second the motion. With the understanding, sort of as a friendly amendment, that that I'd like to see the department heads who are housed in this building put forth their plan. And we'll have to come up with a plan prior to actually opening up the building on September first. I mean, we, if there's no plan in place or if it's not flushed out by that point, then then no. Because I I heard what our health director had to say and I defer to her on that is that she wants a plan. That it's possible, if the pla- if we have a plan and we responsibly follow it, I'm fine with that. I I will say this though, um, I I wouldn't be surprised, I we've heard from the treasurer, but I wouldn't be surprised if, just due to space constraints in the auditor's office, that. That might not go as the public anticipates. I I wouldn't be surprised if the zoning office, um, or planning and zoning, um, still has some appointment. I mean, the directors are gonna have their ability to run their offices the way they wanna run them. And so, while I'm not, while I'm willing to open the building, and Crystal clearly is as well, um, I'm not confident that that's gonna address those issues. Um, but I'm, but I'm there, so.
Where are you at on the September one, I I can't see that.
Yeah, my 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 take is it, that might be a little early, Crystal, it just, not because I wanna s- stall it, I don't. But I think maybe, you know, September fifteen or something or or mid middle of the month might be a bit more time to get the, a workable plan together where. Um, HR and the director, the department heads, as well as the, uh, Jodeen, um, and the board, we'll have to do another meeting, but. Um, I think we're gonna need more time than ten days or twelve days or whatever it is.
And and we may not have a workable plan until.
Yeah, I have.
I'll, I'll accept an amendment.
Okay, so let's put in for September fifteen, if there is a plan in place that is, you know. Acceptable to the board at that point, that's vague, but that's the motion in the second. Although I will, I I've said it like five times now, I'm gonna say it one more time for the record. Will the public be pleased at September sixteen if the doors are unlocked? I am not confident that they will, but I do also agree that it's a public building, that's all. Okay, we have a motion in a second, Tracy.
Shoal.
No.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Du Cook.
Aye.
Okay, so we have until September fifteen to get the plan worked out and I would say uh that we should have another meeting on it. Prior to September fifteen, can send a letter to the department heads, um, requesting their individual thoughts and plans. And then we have to, we'll have to figure it out, that's all. Okay, motion carries. Um, action item number five, consider appointment to planning and zoning commission with possible action. I think this one's you, Lindsay.
All eyes were upon you.
Okay, um, we have uh an opening on the zoning commission. Um, and Hugh Kane uh applied for, he actually applied for interest in the board of adjustment. But our board of adjustment was full and there was some legislation passed in June that um the governor passed. That no board members for our board of adjustment in the county or zoning commission members could no longer live within city limits. So that took out two members of our zoning commission. It didn't affect any members on our board of adjustments. So, with that being said, we had a couple openings um on our zoning commission. So I called, I reached out to Hugh with this application because it just recently came in. Um, and he was, he was interested in serving on the zoning commission and um, so if he, if he is appointed um tonight. His term would expire on twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-one, so um it'd be my recommendation that. And then that would make a full five, well, it would make a five-member board. Our board is currently had seven members, but we co-so, county zoning officials, have sent, has just sent out a, after all this went through. Everybody sent out a email and how many members does each zone county have on their zoning commission members? And the majority of the counties actually have just a five-member zoning commission. So, Dawn and Carrie and I got together and we kinda decided now might be the time to make the change to just a five-member commission instead of seven. It is hard to find the members. Um, so if we did uh um get Hugh on, we would have an actual five-member board. Um, so it would allow us to actually conduct business with a full member board, so.
Are we voting for that also at five now?
No, just whether to put Mr. Kane on the zoning commission.
I sure like five more than four.
Yeah.
Yeah, and 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 actually, the the past couple meetings, we've had.
We've had some splits.
Split decisions, so it's been tough, so we are.
That'll be get, that'll be get business done.
For a good member.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept Mr. Hugh Kane for the appointment?
I would move Hugh Kane for the appointment to the zoning board.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seatonon, Tracy.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Shoal.
Aye.
Du Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries, congratulations, Mr. Kane. Number six, consider inter-fund operating transfer with possible action, secondary roads, nutrition and wellness.
These are the budgeted transfers that are in our fiscal year twenty-one, however, the code does require that you do a resolution. In addition to having it budgeted within um that document. Um, so before you is the inter-fund transfer for secondary roads. That total maximum transfer from the uh general basic is three hundred and eighty thousand this year. And the total from uh rural basic is two million three hundred sixty thousand dollars. Um, an additional seven hundred and forty thousand is transferred from the rural basic from other sources other than property tax. Um, so those totals become secondary road fund, show not exceed three hundred and eighty thousand from the general fund and three point one million from the rural basic fund. On the wellness transfer is, uh, this is a request for half of the budgeted wellness transfer in the amount of thirty-five thousand. Um, we do this usually in two sections, we transfer the first half at the beginning of the year. Um, as we do those wellness transfers throughout the year, we'll need the second half later on. And then the final one is for nutrition. Um, nutrition, we've increased that uh transfer each year. However, um, this year I'm requesting the first half of that transfer eighty-seven thousand five hundred. I'm hopeful, um, we've made some changes to nutrition and with some additional funding that it has received, that that fund balance may not need all of this transfer this year, so. Not gonna, let's hold, not gonna say too much, but we're hoping. Um, but at this time, I would ask that half of that transfer be approved for transfer, um, just to get it set up for the year. So those are the three requests for the transfer as they were set in the budget.
I would move, and I might be able to help here, three hundred and eighty thousand from the general fund to the secondary road fund. And three point one billion from the s- the supplemental.
The rural basic, it's actually a, I I can read the whole thing if you'd like, it's a big, if you would like to move it as presented.
I'll I'll move the three assets.
Then it will cover all of what is within the language.
I thought it was doing okay.
You you were doing okay, I just, I don't know how.
So I made that motion.
And Crystal seconded it.
Over to you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Tracy.
Shoal.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Du Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, number seven, consider FY twenty-one budget departmental appropriations with possible action.
Um, this is also one of those, when we do the fiscal year um budget document for the department of management, it's within service areas. So you budget so much in service area one, service area three. Um, what is required is that you then do an appropriation departmentally and break down how much of that is going going to go to each department. And um, as I was looking through my records, I did not do this at the beginning of July, so I'm asking the board to approve the departmental appropriations of a hundred percent of the county budget. Hereby approved effective July one of twenty twenty for fiscal year twenty-one is reflected on the attachment. And this is that document that has that breakdown that you've seen from um when we did the the budgets, that breaks it down by department.
I would move the departmental appropriations as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Tracy.
Shoal.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Du Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Number eight, budget reports.
Um, budget report, so we are one month into fiscal year twenty-one. Um, normally, we don't have quite so many marks on our pages so early, but um this one, we had our expenditures, we had three payrolls in July. So everybody is ticking slightly higher than what we would normally expect at an eight percent, just because we had that third payroll. Additionally, we've got um, uh, the medical examiner budget is already at sixteen percent and we're we're one month into it. Um, substance abuse, uh, there were a June accrued payment and July payment for the, our substance abuse contract, so it's showing at sixteen percent. General services, our property and liability insurance is paid in July, so those always have that upfront cost. And then in zoning, there's um an annual GIS fee that comes out, so it's showing slightly ahead. As well as the auditor's office has some annual fees for maintenanceing of the voting equipment. Um, their GIS fee and then there was a large um postage payment. When we compare expenditures to prior um fiscal year at this time, uh, there's quite a few changes, but most of them are based on that third payroll. Um, and none of them are anything that's that's concerning at this time for expenditures. Did the board have any questions on expenditures before I move on? When we look at revenues, um, we have um multiple revenues, we would expect about eight percent. Um, we have multiple departments that are not there. Treasurer's office, interest income, of course, interest rates dropped from the time that we budgeted to now, so our, I would not anticipate that we will see the interest that um we had budgeted. Contract law enforcement is billed in December in the sheriff's office, so we won't see those revenues until later on. Clerk of court, um, the percentage of revenues in that increases as the attorney's threshold resets for the new fiscal year. And uh, DCAT services, those reimbursements are proportional to expenses. On the conservation board, we're gonna see building rental rentals and programming fees are gonna be less than what we had anticipated because of of the lack of of opening and programming. Um, if we look at capital projects, we are anticipating needing that additional bond for the nine-one-one communication project for the eight hundred thousand, I believe, that's that's um remaining. The the resolution approved the board to issue. And then, of course, non-departmental is our property tax, uh, first installment should be received September, we should see those September, October timeframe. When we compare it to prior fiscal years, um, at this time, both our driver's license fees and interest income are down from prior year. In the sheriff's office, um, fiscal year twenty, July, receded of accrued sheriff fees and communication fees that we don't see in fiscal year twenty-one. So those are looking like they're um a lot less than what they would be. The recorder is actually fiscal year twenty, um, recording of instruments is up about sixteen thousand from the prior year. The engineer's office, there's uh fiscal year twenty-one, there's accrued bridge funds and use tax from the prior veterans affairs. Uh, they get a ten thousand dollar grant that was receded in August, so that's not a concern. Um, nutrition, we did have an increase to aging resource grant revenue. I did confirm with Jodeen that that was um due to COVID nineteen, but it won't continue to um moving forward. Bond interest transfer for fiscal year twenty and our capital um projects was, um, we transferred those interests and. and now we just receive it. And then item eight, non-departmental, the local option sales tax, um, is showing an increase in the current year versus the prior year. So those are really the revenues at a snapshot. Are there any questions from the board? And then if we look at fund balances, um, our taxation funds will see depleted over the next few months to be replenished when we have taxation. So if you look at, um, the general basic fund, um, we ended the prior fiscal year with, um, a surplus in our general basic because we had so many budgets coming under. Revenues were right, right at about a hundred percent, but we have, um, expenses that came in under. So you'll see that our general supplemental, we're sitting with a, a larger fund balance than we had last year because of that increase to the supplemental that we issued. Um, none of the changes of the fund balances, um, are concerning at this time. They all have reasonable for the time of year that it is. Did the board have any questions?
Megan, um, of the eight hundred thousand left in the nine-one-one, uh, bond.
Yes.
Uh, how much of that is, is, um, fees for banking or transactions, things such as that?
Um, as far as like bond fees? Or do you mean like the interest that we're earning? I mean, we don't pay any bank fees for the money that we have.
Okay, well.
So we issued that first, oh, go ahead.
No, no, I just, any, any extra fees outside of just paying for the system itself?
Oh, um, I can get those numbers for you, I don't have them in front of me. Um, it, it, we'll have to, when the board's ready to move forward, which we'll look at that, um, budget and see, 'cause I'm not real sure the progression of the nine-one-one project, when they're exactly going to need those funds is when to issue them. Um, 'cause we have plenty in the, from the first bond that was issued, but there was about eight hundred thousand, um, that was not issued, um, in that first issuance. So we will, yeah, see, that, that's what's left in that, that revenue piece of it would be the board issuing that final, um, debt on the nine-one-one because we didn't issue all of it at one time.
Okay, all right, that's very clear, thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions? Okay, seemed none. Um, number nine, receive and file reports, uh, A recorder, B humane society, C veterans affair, D general assistance. Do we have a motion?
So move, then we receive and file those four reports?
Second.
Motion and a second, Tracy.
Scholl.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Ducook.
Aye, motion carries. Number ten, supervisors report, um, Supervisor McIntyre.
Um, can you come back to me, I'm almost at home.
You bet. Supervisor Scholl.
Thank you. Um, a few of my normal meetings, uh, keep Iowa beautiful, the city of Indianola. Indianola Municipal Utilities, uh, like the, the other two, you get citizen concerns, and sometimes those run a little higher, and sometimes they're a little bit lower. And then I've got my little special project called the Hill House. And we believe we're gonna have the grand opening on Sunday, August thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Excellent.
To be seen.
Okay.
That's my report.
Thank you. Crystal, I'll jump you if you don't mind.
That, that's fine, thank you.
You bet. I'll keep it real brief. Um, I have a special helper here with me tonight, and she is three. She has faded about twenty minutes ago. So now she's probably sending out text messages to I don't know who. And, uh, so I'm gonna keep it real brief. All right, um, just a couple of quick things I wanted to touch on, uh, as far as observations and, and things. Um, one, I don't think our county was, was as severe with the recent, um, Iowa hurricane. I think everyone kind of learned a new term, but two thousand twenty is wonky. And, uh, we got some pretty good winds in the northern part of the county. And, um, there was some storm damage and some people with power out, outages, at least in Norwalk that I was aware of. Um, a few in the plaza, but a fair amount of storm damage. I will give a report that our county engineer brought a crew out, uh, last Wednesday, and I think is scheduled to, to come back, uh, one more time tomorrow to pick up some bran, uh, branches and limbs that are on the curb. And I think that's real commendable, I know that our, our county has helped out, um, was it Lacona? After some storms, uh, a tornado, a terrible storm, a tornado, um, recently. And, um, they, they moved some things around to help some of the folks up in the plaza, um, at least remove, uh, some of their storm damage. And, um, I will also say this, it was heartwarming to see, um, the folks in Norwalk and, and, um, the plaza as well sort of pitch in together to help, not everyone has chainsaws, or not everyone has physical abilities, maybe due to age or, or illnesses or whatever to, to, to help out. And I know that a lot of good happened with a lot of different people, and I thought that was awesome. Um, and then two, I will say, um, hat tip to, to every member who serves on a school board. Um, you know, sometimes I look at the decisions that we make here, where there, there is no way to make everyone happy. There is, there is nothing you're gonna do that's gonna catch a hundred percent, or even usually eighty or seventy-five percent, um, on some of the more dicey decisions. But, um, all those who are serving on a school board, I sincerely commend you for that. Um, our schools are starting next week, and, um, you know, we're gonna see how that goes. I, I appreciate the earlier motion to sort of backdate that to September fifteenth with respect to this building, because I think that'll give us a few weeks while we're working on those plans to sort of see how the schools are doing too. Um, and, and things can change, I, I don't, I don't know what that plan will look like, but I, I will pledge to work diligently on it with our department heads and see if we can come up with a safe solution. But best wishes to, to all those teachers and the students that'll be back in school soon. That's all I have. Supervisor McIntyre. Are you ready?
Thank you. And just to add, add to, um, the declaration that was made by, um, President Donald Trump, a full emergency declaration for the state of Iowa. So, just wanted to add it out there. Um.
Crystal, we're losing you. Crystal, can you hear me? Crystal?
I'll handle it, and, um, go until, that's, that's my report.
Thank you very much.
She's gone. It dropped.
Well, thank you supervisor. We're now open for public input, if there's anyone from the public or online from the public. Um, comments limited to three minutes per individual. Um, no action can be taken on the comments per the requirements of the open meetings law, but we very well may do so in the future. No public input will be allowed for any of today's agenda items. Once going twice, sold. Um, number twelve, next meeting date is September the first, two thousand twenty, at nine thirty in the morning. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Show them.
And I'm gonna second that.
You're gonna have to.
Tracy.
Scholl.
Aye.
Ducook.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you all.